Gloucester Chapter of the NAACP for Europe being one of the sponsors of the forum and for covering the cost of the Gloucester County Deputy Services this evening. Thank you Gloucester Retired Teachers Association and Gloucester Education Association for being sponsors for the forum. Thank you Lieutenant Commander Witt and the Gloucester High School NJROTC Color Guard for the presentation of colors this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce the moderator for this evening. The Reverend Randolph Graham is the pastor of the First United Baptist Church in Gloucester, Virginia. He is a native of King William County, Virginia, and received his elementary and secondary education from the King William County Public School System. He matriculated at Rappahannock Community College, served in the United States Marine Corps, and later received a Bachelor of Arts degree from Avery University. He also received a Master of Business Administration from Virginia Commonwealth University and a Master of Divinity degree in the Samuel DeWitt Proctor School of Theology, Virginia Union University, Richmond, Virginia. Reverend Graham retired from corporate America in February of 2016 after forty years of service. He has extensive business and information technology experience and possesses strong leadership and project management skills. He's a Certified Information Systems Auditor and has developed and teaches a grant writing course for nonprofit organizations. Reverend Graham has received many honors and holds membership in numerous organizations to name a few. Vice President and Director of PCEC Nonprofit Corporation, Secretary and Director TC Walker and Woodville Rosenwald School Foundation, Adjunct Professor, Virginia University of Lynchburg, Distinguished Faculty Member, Institute of Internal Auditors, Former Election Officer, King William County, Member of the National Black MBA Association, Member of the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge 253. And also a very special thanks to a very special lady, Bobby Ray, who pulled all of us together to make this evening possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And again, welcome to the Gloucester Candidates Forum. Our sponsors have planned this forum using the guidelines developed by the League of Women Voters. Our forum will be conducted with the utmost respect, neutrality, fairness, and non-partisanship. We look forward to an informative discussion of issues that are important to the Gloucester County Voters. Before introducing the candidates, let me review the rules for tonight's forum. Campaign literature and templates, even business cards, have been placed on the candidate's information table at the entrance. No literature may be distributed to the audience by candidates nor their agents. Lots have been drawn to determine the order the candidates will speak. Each candidate will have two minutes to make their opening statements as well as their closing statements. The candidates making the openings and closing statements, Mr. Myers, will also answer the first forum question, and after which candidates will alternate answering the questions first. Candidates will have one minute to answer the forum questions. Forum volunteers will time the candidates' responses, and our volunteers are here, Flora Rogine and Allison French. Earlier, the audience submitted questions to the candidates. The questions have been screened, sorted, consolidated by our volunteers. As moderator, I will pose the alternating questions between the Board of Supervisors and the school board candidates. I will ask as many of the audience's questions as time allows. All candidates will have the opportunity to respond to each question posed to their group. No question, let me repeat this, no question will be directed to a single candidate. At the inclusion of the forum, if there are remaining questions for our candidates, their contact information again can be found on the candidate's forum table. The last rule, the last rule, and let me be clear on this, please hold your pluses because of our time constraints until after the final candidate's closing statement. Now, let me introduce the candidates. Candidates in attendance for the Board of Supervisors are York District Mr. Philip Lozani, York District Mr. Kevin Farmer, At Large Mr. John C. Meyer, At Large Mr. Kevin M. Smith. Candidates for the school board are Petzworth District Anita F. Parker, York District Allison Nelson, At Large Damian Kelly, At Large Brenda Mack. Let's get started. Our first questions for the Board of Supervisors, as stated in the vision statement of the Board of Supervisors for 2035. Opening statements by our candidates.
Reverend Graham, I'd like to thank the sponsors. I'd like to thank the sponsors for tonight's forum. Can you hear Owen?
No.
I'd like to thank the sponsors of tonight's forum for the work they put in to help bring this to the citizens of Gloucester County. And I'd especially like to thank you, citizens, who made the time and the effort to come out here tonight and become better at the forum than you ever could have been. Let me introduce myself. I'm John Meyer. I started my adult life as a fighter pilot in the United States Air Force. I've done combat missions over Iraq and Bosnia. I left the Air Force in 1996. Is this better if I get real pissed? Still went to the Air Force Academy, still flew missions over Iraq and Bosnia. When I left the Air Force in 1996, I worked for a defense consulting firm in Virginia. And my wife, Flora, and I moved down here in 2005 to Gloucester. And in 2010, I started my own consulting business operating out of my home here in Gloucester. In 2013, I won election for supervisor at large with 66 percent of the vote. And I ran on conservative principles, reducing taxes, reducing regulations should result in economic growth. Our board worked hard together to ensure the foundation was set for economic growth in the county. And I want you to look around you. When you drove down here, look around you, and what did you see? Gloucester County is more prosperous, has more amenities, better schools, and is a better place to live than it was four years ago. We're definitely moving in the right direction. To ensure continuity in our efforts, I asked for your vote in November to help ensure the board stays intact and that Gloucester County stays on track. Thank you. Ms. Farmer?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Farmer, and I'm running for York District Supervisor's seat. My family and I chose to live in Gloucester when I retired from almost thirty years of service in the United States Navy. I retired as a master chief where I was responsible for training, budget, leadership, personnel. Because of my career, I bring experience from best practices from different parts of the country. And I'm actively and involved in numerous community activities and organizations here in Gloucester. When I retired, I decided to set my roots here. This was the first place I ever chose myself to live. I brought my family here because Gloucester is the life worth living, and I believe that. I have become concerned about what direction the county has for lack of transparency of certain members of the Board of Supervisors. After my personal experiences with some of the members of the board, and after talking to many people in the county who have had the same concerns as I, I was convinced to run for the Board of Supervisors in this election. I believe I can bring a more pragmatic approach to the issues facing Gloucester County, and I look forward to your support as a member. Thank you.
I teach at the university. I can't sit down and talk. I'm sorry. Welcome, everyone. My name is Philip Lozani, and it's a privilege and honor to be your representative at York District of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors. You know, over the last four years as a board member, and four years prior to that as a member of the Planning Commission, I've developed a full working knowledge of this county and its processes. And as an executive retired from the Green Shipbuilding Finance, I bring my full experience to bear and bring that track record of success to you as taxpayers. And so what do I want to do with all this experience? I want to continue to keep our taxes low, and we've done that in Gloucester County, we really have. I want to continue making our county services the best it can be, and we've only, we've done this with just a minimal tax increase in four years. I want to continue the great work we've been doing with our school board, our department heads, and our citizens. I want to continue to make a, develop a zero-based budget, which is the reason why we didn't raise taxes this year. I want to continue to make Gloucester County open for business. You know, over the last year, we've attracted seventeen businesses in Gloucester County, seventeen of them, and we get sales tax revenues from that. And that's tax money, that's, that's sales revenue that doesn't come out of your pocketbook and doesn't come out of your wallet. And I want to continue to provide compensation to our county employees. In fact, that's a number-one goal this year when we get ready to develop our budget in fall. Thank you. And so, you probably heard that I've been working on the Coleman Bridge. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the first time, this is the first time we've got congressional support to make the Navy come to the Armed Services Committee and explain why they can't pay for operations and maintenance on that bridge. So this is the kind of experience I bring to bear for you. This is the kind of experience you deserve. There is no time for a learning curve. There is no time for on-the-job training. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Smith, and I'm running as an independent board supervisor. I was born in Matthews County and raised in Matthews County, Virginia. I moved to Gloucester thirty-five years ago. I'm married to the former Missy Miss Corbin who grew up right here in Vena. I have four children, a godson, and four grandchildren. I'm employed as the head of security at the Riverside Walter Reed Hospital, where I've been employed for the past thirty-four years. I have Associate's Degree of Police Science. I'm pastor of the Waylon Baptist Church in Matthews, and I have a Bachelor's Degree of Theology from the Richmond, Virginia Seminary. I've served on the Gloucester County School Board for twelve years. I've served as chairman of the board for two years and vice-chair of the board for four years. If I'm elected, I'm a strong advocate for Gloucester County Public Schools. I would seek full funding for the Rescue Fire Insurance Departments. I support security property, personnel to fund the year-round homeless shelter. This year, they had the guest program, and I've been having it a couple of years, it's done wonderful. I found out that they've served forty-eight people last winter. One person is too many to be homeless. I support securing a pay increase for county and school employees. I want to establish an atmosphere where county employees can voice their concerns without fear of reprisal. I'm a strong advocate to build a sports complex on Page Middle School that includes a community pool. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear from our school board candidates. Ms. Kelly?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you each and every one of you for coming out here tonight. This is what democracy looks like firsthand, right in front of all of us. I want to thank the three community organizations that are hosting this event for us this afternoon, and also the Gloucester County Sheriff's Office in the back as well, providing security for us all tonight. So my name is Damian Kelly. I'm running for the Gloucester County Public School at large seat. I've been a student at Gloucester County Public Schools from Abington Elementary, Page Middle School, Peasling Middle School, and Gloucester High School. I recently graduated this past June. So I think if elected to the school board, I bring something that no one else can possibly bring, and that is a new perspective that we need on the school board. I've walked in the halls that these students are walking through, I've sat in the desks these students are sitting in today, and I think again that me being on the school board will bring a freshman perspective that focuses on the teachers, the students, and the community. I have three siblings that attend Gloucester County Public Schools, one that is attending Abington Elementary, one attending Page Middle School, one attending Peasling, I mean, in Gloucester High School, and then my grandmother is also a substitute teacher here in Gloucester County Public Schools. Thank you.
Ms. Mack?
Good evening. Thank everyone for coming out this evening and devoting your time for democracy, because just as Damian stated, this is democracy at work. My name is Brenda Mack, and I do live here in Gloucester County, and I am seeking the office of the school board at large position. As a wife and a mother, education was paramount in our household. I wanted to make sure that my children received the best education that the public schools could provide for them. When I moved here in 2014 with my husband, my idea at that time was really not to run. My husband was ill, and of course I lost him in 2015. While in Michigan, though, I served on a charter school board, so I have experience. For ten years, I served as director for seven of those years, and the last three years I actually served as school board president. So I truly believe that I bring an active experience of what the school board is about. I have a granddaughter that attends Abingdon, which she absolutely loves. I've had opportunity to speak to her teachers. I've had opportunity to attend school board meetings. My next step is I'd like to attend some of the PTO meetings. Our public schools right now are under attack. I look at these schools, and I look at the charter schools are trying to come in. I'm looking at virtual reality schools, we just had the HB 1400 bill, the House bill. I think we need to make sure and ensure that our children have the best education that our public schools can provide. Our children no longer are competing on the state and local levels. They're competing now for jobs on the global level, and we need to make sure that our children are up to that challenge. So we want to make sure that our teachers...
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Ms. Walker?
Good evening. I appreciate all of you being here tonight. I am the Petzworth District Representative for the last twelve years. I am a come here, I'm not a born here, but I have been here over thirty years. My children were raised here, they went to school here. I've worked diligently for all of our kids throughout the years as a PTA mom, football mom, soccer mom, baseball mom. I did all of those things that us moms usually do, but then I got interested in doing a little bit more. And I have been grateful to serve on the school board for all of these years. We've accomplished some things, we've not accomplished some things. When I first got on the board, I felt like that I was being told by everybody under the sun, "We need a new high school. It's too small, we need a new high school." Well, at that point, when my oldest son was in school, there was over two thousand kids walking the halls at Gloucester High School. We're now down to about sixteen hundred. We need to look at the high school and revamp the high school so that it serves our students better. So that's my goal, that I hope that we can come to an agreement with, to get our school in a better place so that the high school students can benefit from all that we have to offer. I've, oh, okay. I have served, since I've been on the board, I've served on the Ed Foundation, the Middle Peninsula Regional Special Ed Board, the Safety Committee for Gloucester County Public Schools, Discipline Committee, and Community Use and Facilities Member. I'm also a member of SERC, Citizen Emergency Response, and the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson?
Good evening. I would also like to thank you for joining us this evening and spending time listening to us. I am the current York County, or York District Member of the Gloucester County School Board. I was just recently appointed in July 2017, so I'm very new to this position. Just a little bit about me, I am a Gloucester native. I attended all Gloucester County Public Schools and graduated from Gloucester High School in 1996. Upon graduation, I had an opportunity to begin working in my parents' insurance business. So that is when I began my career as a life and health insurance agent. Twenty-one years later, here I am, I am the owner of our agency in Hayes. My husband Keith, he works alongside me, and together we have two girls. They are a senior and freshman at Gloucester High School. So I've been very involved as a parent ever since my daughter, the freshman, was, began kindergarten. I've been very involved in volunteering at different capacities in the schools and then also serving in the school PTAs. And I've always been very passionate about our school system, the children, and also the teachers and staff that serve our students every day. I've attended many school board and board of supervisors' meetings over the years, been very vocal at times, and I'm just very eager to take on this role, and I, again, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to each of the candidates for your opening statements. We'll now begin with the forum's first question. And the question is, as stated in the vision statement of the Board of Supervisors for 2035, Gloucester will benefit from steady and consistent economic growth. In your opinion, as a candidate of the Board of Supervisors, what specific actions should the board encourage that will bring economic opportunities to the county that will keep its citizens painfully employed in Gloucester County instead of hampering roads across the bridge? Ms. Myers?
I think the most important thing in growing businesses is for government to get out of businesses' way. We need to go aggressive and actively reducing the regulations that limit and constrain our entrepreneurs in building their businesses. We also need to streamline the processes they go through for the planning and permitting so that you don't have to invest months of time in delays or payroll waiting for the county to approve, or eventually put in money. One of the biggest things we can do to help businesses in this county is invest in broadband wireless throughout the counties, so that all parts of this county are connected, and all parts can participate in the internet economy, and particularly the home-based businesses, which we appreciate. And as a matter of fact, these three items are up for discussion on October 17 for a super budget meeting because we're forward leaning and thinking about those particular things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Farmer?
Well, I don't necessarily disagree with some of what you just said there, but I believe the number-one thing we need to work on to get our, get our citizens jobs in the county is to educate them, okay? And securing additional funding for our schools to use to increase technical, vocational, and consumer education-type training so that they can get jobs in this county. And then as the economy grows, they're the ones growing the economy, not people from across the bridge who have that opportunity. And I, and I believe that the preparation, this preparation will lead to job opportunities in this county in fields like building, and those kind of jobs, that kind of training helps people, say the waterman, we had types of vocational education. And we can't wait till the economy starts to grow because our, our students will be left behind. We need to start investing today in those types of education because nobody wants to move. You can make it easy and, and easy for business to move, but nobody wants to move to a county that has poor schools.
Thank you. Ms. Annie?
Let me tag along what Mr. Myers said. I'm gonna give you an example of what happened three and a half years ago when I first got off the board. We lost a $30 million business in Gloucester County. The owner of this business was the inventor of the ultrasound machine. He decided to move to York County because our staff, our county, told him that he wanted to expand fifty feet behind his building. They wanted him to drill underneath Route 17 for water and sewer. That was $150,000. They wanted him to build a facade in front of his building to make it look good in front of 17. That was $75,000. And then they wanted him to continue to do other works that would require him to spend additional monies. So as a result of that, we simplified the highway development ordinance. That highway development ordinance has created the Aldi's that you see, has created the TJ Maxes that you see, has created all the big stores that we're seeing. What we are hoping is that a Sam's Club or a Costco comes sniffing around back here because of what we've done for our ordinances here to simplify it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Keep quality employees in the community, and not have them go across the bridge. Start with having a competitive compensation package while county and school employees that will make them want to stay in Gloucester. We have an exodus of school with county employees leaving Gloucester. Economic development is greatly enhanced by a great, by a great school system. Therefore, it's imperative that the county work with the school system regarding the Gloucester High School master plan study to renovate and modernize the high school. We can build nice restaurants, build nice buildings, have nice Aldis, have nice stores, but what good are those if we don't have the people in Gloucester, we're not attracting the people?
Thank you. We'll now hear from our school board candidates. As stated in the vision statement of the Gloucester County School Board, Gloucester will provide an environment that focuses on meeting and exceeding the expectations of the stakeholders in each facet of the educational process. In your opinion, as a candidate of the Gloucester County School Board, what are the three most important facets needed to provide an environment that will focus on meeting and exceeding the expectations of our community of learners? Why is each important?
My three are the safety of our students, of visitors, and to our teachers and instructors of Gloucester County Public Schools, student achievement, and the relationship between the school board and the community and parents. I think all three of those are very key into a successful school district and into the achievement of our students as well. Safety for number one, safety, we need to make sure our children feel safe in our public schools. Thanks to the Gloucester County Sheriff's Office, we have numerous sheriffs that go through our schools, work in our school district, and we need to keep them in there as well. Student achievement, we need to make sure that we are keeping them high-quality educated teachers, retaining those high-quality teachers in our schools. And then the third and last one again is the relationship between parents and the community and the school board, and I think that is very important too because I believe what happens in our community affects our school district, and what happens in our school district affects our community.
Thank you. Ms. Mack?
Thank you. The first thing that I think of when I think of these three things is our school, our curriculum, and of course, the safety of our children. I think these things are imperative, that we make sure that our children are well taken care of when they are away from us. The second thing is, in order for us to maintain a good, a good working relationship with the schools, is making sure that our teachers are compensated for what they do. They have, they have a great chore with them, with dealing with our children, and we want to make sure that they have the best pay that we can give them. And the last thing, I believe, is making sure that we maintain accreditation for our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Environment conducive to learning is, is the most important thing that I think we need to look at. Everything going on in the world today, I believe we want to feel safe sending our kids to school. We as adults want to feel safe when we go out to dinner or to a sporting event with our families. We have a great ongoing relationship with our sheriff's office. I would like to see that continue, but I... I would like to see that continue, but and as any of you that know me also know that I would love to see an officer in our elementary schools as well. That's real important to me. I'm hoping that that does come about at some point. Partnering with our families and our businesses to have the best diverse learning experience we can for our students, prepare our students for the future academically and at the next level, but also have courses in place for those children that are not necessarily going to go to college, because we do have other children that need to go on in the workforce, and we need to provide for those children as well.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
To me, relationships, academic achievement, and safety are the three most important to me. I start with relationships, because parents have to be involved in their children's lives and their education, and of course, that begins at home. And then once, of course, they start school, they have to have that constant communication with their teachers and administrators, and I think with teachers, that goes a long way when they know the parents are involved and actively engaged in their child's education. Academic achievement, of course, the school, the school board has a responsibility to, you know, see that all instructional needs are met for each child, you know, specialized to their ability and needs. And safety, of course, we have to keep our children safe and staff safe when they're in our school buildings. We want them to know that they're well cared for, whether they're, you know, riding the bus at school or attending school events. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second question for the Board of Supervisors, are there any moral, legal, or ethical issues that would disqualify you from serving on the Board of Supervisors? Mr. Palmer, you would begin the discussion?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Mr. Fazani?
I sleep well at night.
Good. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Myers?
It's gonna be a short answer, so I want to practice my big voice. Chris, can you hear me okay? Okay, thanks. No.
Thank you, sir. For the school board, I'd put you the same question. Are there any moral, legal, or ethical issues that would disqualify you from serving? Getting the dismat?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes, sir.
Hello.
We heard your opening statement. What additional skills will you bring to the position on the Board of Supervisors? Starting with Mr. Fazani.
Well, as a former finance executive at New Shipbuilding, I managed an $8 billion program, ship construction program. I'm an assistant professor at Christian Ford University where I teach finance. I've had, I've had four years of experience working on the board. I know every aspect of this budget that you see right here, every page of it. I understand every line I don't know, every line. And so that's the kind of experience I bring to bear for adding taxpayers. We have no time for a learning curve. We have no time for on-the-job training, so this is the kind of experience I bring to bear for all the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I bring 12 years of school board experience. The school board budget, superintendent's budget, that wasn't a budget that we just had to say, "Okay, Mr. Superintendent, we're, we're approved of." That was a budget we had to go through, line by line, understanding. It was something I may not have understood all of before, but I know how to ask questions, and I know who to go to to find the answers, and I think it would be the same way if you do have a learning curve. There's gotta be a learning curve. You can't go on to anything knowing it all, so there is a learning curve. So I, what I didn't, what I don't know, I know how to ask questions, I know how to find my answers.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
I have a Masters in Business Administration from William &amp; Barry, so the tenant skills in management and finance. Innovation initiatives is an important skill, and over the course of my tour on Board of Supervisors, I've initiated over 30 different policies and regulation changes that the board has enacted. Finally, leadership is key, an attribute, and as we discovered with the current administration, sometimes it does military discipline, leadership, and how you go about performing your duties and doing them in a orderly, predictable fashion pays big dividends in what you're accomplishing.
Thank you. To our, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer?
What other qualifications I bring, I would agree with the gentleman to my right. I bring 30 years of military experience. I was a command master chief or senior enlisted advisor at DMA when I retired. I had 600 people working under me, and we had a budget of $340 million. We had detachments in 17 countries, 34 detachments in 17 countries, and we also provided service to all embassies worldwide.
Thank you. To our school board, after hearing your opening statement, what additional skills will you bring to your position on the school board? Starting with Ms. Parker?
As I've stated, I was, I've been on board for 12 years. I definitely had a learning curve that first year. I feel like that we've made a lot of accomplishments through the years. We've also gone downhill in a few areas. I'm most disappointed in the fact that we've had to do away with some of our vocational classes. That's real important to me. I'm hopeful that as the budget gets a little bit better, that we can bring some of those classes back. So I'm hoping that my experience, that I've served on the school board, will bring a lot of effort on my part to bring some of the things back that I feel like we've lost.
Thank you. Nelson?
Well, aside from my parental experience, I would say that I am currently serving on the Parent Advisory Committee for the Gloucester County School Board on the parent's side, and so that's, I've been serving on that since 2016, and I'm also serving on the Master Plan Committee overseeing the plans for the high school, so that's been very informative. But I would say, you know, just attending so many meetings over the years and just always wanting to stay in the know of what's going on, the budget, and, you know, the interaction with not only the school board members and also the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. The next question for the Board of Supervisors?
Again? Sorry. Can you read the question one more time?
Yes. After hearing the opening statements, we want to hear what additional skills council you'll bring to the school board.
So actually, being a student in Gloucester County Public Schools, I think, is very key. Again, I've sat in the same seats that these students are sitting in, walked the same hallways that these students and teachers are walking through, and I've worked very closely with administrators, students, and teachers throughout my years, especially my high school years, so I understand what they are facing in our public education system here in Gloucester County. I've held leadership council, I sat on the leadership council in my senior year with the principal of Gloucester High School and several of the students. So again, I think what's important for, for me to be able to sit on the school board, I think, I would be a great asset, because I understand what everyone is facing in this public education system in Gloucester High, Gloucester County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I bring, as a former teacher, I understand the challenges that our teachers face each day. I also bring 10 years of school board experience, seven of which as a director and the last three as school board president. And as school board president, I understand the challenge of a budget and what it entails to make sure that a budget works. Along with that budget, it also entails transparency, so we want to make sure that there's transparency in our budgets for our school. I also have an understanding, I also have an understanding of technology base. I worked for Blue Cross Blue Shield as a trainer, and I have a extensive background in technology.
Thank you. Now, our next question for the Board of Supervisors, and again, as a reminder, these questions are coming from the audience. What is your vision for Gloucester County for the next 15 to 20 years? How will you carry it out specifically? Increasing, promoting economic development, retaining people after graduation? What is your plan? Starting with...
Ms. Smith?
Well, I guess that goes back to our opening question earlier, that we want to make sure we keep qualified employees in our community by offering them a good compensation package, not having our teachers leaving our county, not just to go on the bridge, but we have teachers that are leaving to go to counties that are local also. Also, economic development, as I said earlier, is greatly enhanced by a great school system. People will follow a great school. People go online, they want to know what the school was like when they moved to the county, when they're bringing their kids into that school. They want to know they have great schools to go to. Economic development starts with great schools.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
And to tag on to that, great counties begin with economic development. Every dollar that this county uses has first been made by somebody with superior wages. And the first thing you have to do if you want to build a good foundation for your locality is increase jobs, increase money that your citizens make when they go to work. And we've been doing a good job of that, and we've seen good results. The next thing that you're gonna use this for is to help them improve the school system. You want to attract other high-talented folks into the county and to educate the students so that when they leave, they're better prepared to meet that link out there. And finally, better jobs in the county means more Gloucester High School students will graduate from Gloucester High School and come back here to live, so we can see their kids or grandkids and don't have to go to some other state to see them. That's my vision.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
My vision for Gloucester County over the next 15 years is pretty similar. Based on a foundation of a good school system, people will move here. People move here, businesses will want to come here, in conjunction with having a business-friendly environment that will create a place that people want to live and prosper and bring their kids to, and then in essence, in that, cause more growth, and that's, that's what I would be doing.
Thank you. Mr. Fazani?
I see, I see something more than just 15 years. What, what I'd like to see in Gloucester County is light industry coming. Light industry that will employ Gloucester County schools, Gloucester County school students who come here, educate themselves, and move on. We have to have, a lot of businesses require people who want to work, who can read, who can write, who can reason through mathematics, who can reason through science. Those are the things that businesses are looking for, people who can think, and if we can bring and attract light industry here over the next 15 to 30 years, we will completely transform how this county will look, not only from its school systems, but from the economic development that will occur as a result of the light industry coming into Gloucester County.
Thank you. Now, to the school board, and this is in reference to teacher pay. What is your plan to attract and retain highly qualified teachers in light of the nationwide teacher shortage when neighboring counties pay more? Pay more?
Or Ms. Parker? Ms. Parker?
Who pays more?
Nelson?
Well, I think we definitely have to start with competitive higher pay for our teachers. We've got to get them to stay here and also attract more teachers to this area as some retire, so we just have to work together with the, with you, citizens, and the Board of Supervisors to get those things in place.
Thank you. Ms. Calvin?
I agree with Ms. Nelson 1% on that. We do need to continue to, over and over time, continue to give our teachers pay raises that they deserve, and also to keep highly effective teachers, we must also have a strong administration as well that gives them support.
Ms. Mack?
To bounce off the same things that my other two colleagues have stated, in order to maintain a good educational system for our children, we need good teachers, and in that, we need to make sure that they're compensated for the work that they do. They have, they have, they have a great job ahead of them, and that is to make sure that our children have a great education. In order for them to have a great education, they have to be able to live, they have to be able to pay their bills, they have to be able to buy food, they have to be able to do everything that we do on a normal basis. So we want to make sure that they're compensated for the work that they do.
Thank you. The next question is for the Board of Supervisors. So, we're in it together. Ms. Parker?
I'm just gonna ditto anyway. No, we, I think we all are aware that we have, I'm sure you've read it in the newspaper, we've lost some really good teachers in Gloucester County to other close by localities. We need to stop and think about not only the compensation piece, but that we make our teachers feel like they're important. I think that parents sometimes do that, but this day and time, we kind of have this atmosphere out there that the teacher's always at fault, and I think as parents, I've been a parent with three boys, that's interesting in itself, but I think that we need to stop and look at what our teachers do and try to compensate them and thank them for what they do for our children, because it's the most important job that's out there, because everything everybody does out here is because you want a teacher to teach you.
Thank you. Now, the next question is for the Board of Supervisors, and is referencing jobs. A lot has been written about how our young people leaving the county after graduation. As a supervisor or contender, explain how this can be remedied and at possibly what cost to the taxpayer.
Ms. Myers?
I think the first thing is the young person's skill development set, K through 14, incorporating the concept of graduating as a senior at high school, hasn't taken you far enough down the road to preparing for today's workforce. Some additional two years of junior college or technical training, or going to a lawyer university is probably necessary to get those records and abilities. And once we get the better-trained students coming out of Gloucester High School, obviously the other thing you need to have are good-paying jobs and attract young people in the county. And the way we do that is making available business climate and regulatory tax structure. And at this point, we need to find places where businesses can move to, so find some product or areas that we can market to outside districts.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Do you have any questions?
A lot has been written about our young people leaving the county after graduation. As a supervisor or contender, explain how this can be remedied and at possibly what cost to the taxpayer.
Well, a lot can be remedied through economic development, which is one tier of the problem. The other problem is making sure that person is prepared to take the jobs like we've been talking about, and, and part of that is that the cost to the county is some sacrifice and investment in the future of this county. And when we're talking about our future and our kids and their education, most everybody's willing to sacrifice a little for their kids, and I think that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. Mr. Fazani?
So, so, to bring in, to give practical jobs, high-paying jobs to citizens of Gloucester, students coming out of high schools, the school system here, again, you need to bring the right type of businesses into Gloucester County. That, that is important. Preparing the kids, preparing students to work in an environment where business would require them to do specialized skills, would require, Mr. Myers, a vocational training, specialized training beyond high school sometimes. It's whatever path a student wants to take. Students, I always tell my students in C and E, choose the path that's gonna give you the most best rewards. And if you choose a path that doesn't do there, then stop, reconsider your situation, and move on to another path. So again, it's up to the student, it's up to economic development. It's up to economic development. It's up to our school systems. It's up to everyone working together to make these students come back here and work as long as there's a place for them to work in.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I think a good start would be that master plan for Gloucester High School and renovation and modernizing that high school. Bringing back those technology courses that have gone. There's a lot of classes at Gloucester High School that were technical that had left. And I know serving on the board, they had classes that kids could come out of, graduate from school and go to work, go right to work. And a daughter graduated, came out of school, licensed cosmetologist. So bringing back those technology classes and modernizing that high school, I think is the best, best course.
Thank you. The next question is for the school board. How do you properly balance between the unlimited wants and the limited resources in the budget planning process? Beginning with Mr. Kelly.
With the budget that we have, we need to make sure that we are putting the money where it needs to go, for first and foremost. So unlimited wants, do we really need those is the question. So again, we need to put our money where it needs to go, prioritize our money, and again, like you said, like I said, make sure that we are putting the money where it goes. And then the unlimited wants, do we really need them?
Ms. Mack?
Can you repeat that question once more, please?
How do you properly balance between the unlimited wants and the limited resources in the budget planning process?
I think in this case, we do have a definite need of unlimited wants. But the idea is that you need to filter through those unlimited wants and figure out which ones are the ones that are really needed at this point. What are the best going to serve our children? And then with that, then we can decide on what we can budget to make sure that those wants are incorporated into the curriculum.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir. I believe that we need to, we've always looked at our budget carefully, but I think that we need to understand that our children that are growing up this day and time have got to have technology available to them. And by having the availability of the technology and upgrades and things like that that we need, our kids will go out there and be equipped for jobs locally, statewide, nation, and globally. And I think that's really important. So I would like to see us spend the money that we do have that we can get our hands on in the technology realm in order to better our kids for the future.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
I would say that we have to prioritize our, our, our needs first. And there's usually not much left over in the budget. So I think we have to do, take a look at the career and technical offerings. And of course, as Mr. Smith said, that does involve taking a look at our high schools. So, and even at our middle schools, because we really need to increase the career and technical offerings at that, at the middle school level first. And then, you know, again, of course, into the high school as well, so we can better serve and educate these kids and get them out into the working force, hopefully here in Gloucester County.
Thank you. Our next question for the board of supervisors. Do you think the teacher's salary should be based on merit after a baseline has been established yearly? Ultimately, do you think the current system, one fits all, is sufficient? Beginning with Mr. Palmer?
I think that we should have upward mobility within the system. The way I see it now is people come here early on, hire them early, and then they look across the river, once they gain the experience, to get the pay that they need. We know that college education is costing more and more every year. So a brand new graduate from college who's looking for a teaching job has a huge, they have huge debts they have to pay. And we have to have the ability for people to have upward mobility, stay here, get the experience, keep the experience, so we don't have to start over with on the job training, like, like my opponent says, within the county government. Let's keep those people, let's give them upward mobility, and we'll have a better place.
Thank you. Mr. Vazani?
I retired from the world where you pay for performance. One size fits all doesn't always work. It's always good, there's other localities in this country that pays for performance. And I strongly believe if you have a strong teacher, if you have a teacher that's successful with their students, and they, they achieve results that are above and beyond what the other teachers have gotten, it's perfectly normal to pay for results. But then there should be a baseline, a baseline paid that every teacher should get, and then that extra little extra for the teacher that's out to perform, to perform their responsibilities.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
I agree that there should be, I agree that should be a baseline and should also be upward mobility. But I don't see anything happening at this point. I don't see where our teachers are getting any raises. In 2014, our school division got the following increases. In 2014 and 15, some plastic lines were the only one that got employees, never your power professionals, your bus drivers, and your cafeteria workers. 2015, 16, there was no compensation at all. So that's not getting anywhere. Then 2016 and 17, they got a four percent raise. However, the county, the county only provided one percent of that four percent raise. The raise was given due to increase in state revenue. 2017, bonuses for support staff were up two percent for teachers. However, the county did not supply any funding for this. This is a result of state funding, division adjustments, and the use of the fiscal near 2012 funds. I just think we just can do better compensating our teachers. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. The same question is for the school board candidates.
Need to pay our teachers a, the baseline is correct. We need to make sure that there's an increased compensation, you're seeing ranks, so that the average teacher can look forward to greater pay as a stay in the system, kind of moderate in the case scale. I also believe in merit pay, that much of the extra pay that goes into the teacher's pocket should be based on the performance of the classroom, to the extent that you can. One minor correction, maybe we use a different set of words, Mr. Smith, but in 2016, the state was going to provide two percent, the county was going to provide two percent. And the state said, oh, we're over budgets, we can't provide anything. And in fact, the county ended up paying me a four percent raise.
Thank you. Same question for the school board candidates. I'm Paul. Do you think the teacher's salary should be based on merit after a baseline has been established yearly? Ultimately, do you think the current system, one size fits all, is sufficient? Ms. Mack?
Thank you. I, I also agree that a baseline should be, that baseline should be increased to make sure that the teachers are compensated equally at one point. But I also do believe that teachers should be paid on merit. Teachers that go above and beyond, and I think each, each teacher should be, should be compensated for their merits that they put into it. But the idea is that every teacher should start out equally.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
I have a little different view, only because I do believe that we need to up the lowest part of where we start our teacher scale. It's way below what we should be for the state. The other idea that I have though, I'm concerned if we just go to merit base. And the reason I am concerned about that is because we, teachers do not choose what children are put into their classrooms. And if teachers are going to be judged on how their classrooms work and how well they do, they can't choose those children. And all children learn differently, so I feel a little bit differently about that.
Thank you.
I also believe that there should be a baseline. We have, we are known as kind of like the starter school system where newly appointed teachers will come and teach. And once they're about five years in, then they leave for other surrounding areas to go teach for more money. I do not support merit pay either. I am like Miss Parker, I do believe that, you know, kids are going to vary each year and, you know, the teachers do the best that they can do with those students. And so you can do an outstanding, fantastic performance one year, and maybe your students didn't perform so well the next year. So I would not support merit pay.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I would have to agree with Miss Parker and Miss Nelson because due to the fact that teachers do not choose who's going to be in the classroom with them. Again, some teachers might succeed better than other teachers due to the fact they have better students in the classroom that are actually wanting to learn. Some students don't want to learn in other teachers' classrooms, so I think merit pay is not the way to go.
Thank you. Now to our board supervisors. This question may not apply to Mr. Palmer, but please feel free to answer. What have you, and Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. What have you done while in office to increase opportunities for working watermen in agricultural industry in Gloucester? Mr. Vazani?
So, so I was distracted. What was the question again?
The question again is, what have you done while in office to increase opportunities for working watermen in agricultural industry in Gloucester?
Specifically for, for watermen, we have, we have simplified some of the ordinances required for doing businesses in Gloucester County. That includes, that includes some of the business practices and watermen, the watermen experience here. Sometimes when you simplify an ordinance, a waterman can do things differently than what he used to do before. And we have been successful in allowing them to do that. So again, when you, when you work with an ordinance, when you simplify an ordinance, it's a one size fits all ordinance. And the watermen, we've seen, have taken advantage of that.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, what is your vision? Repeat the question. What have you done, what is your vision while in office to increase opportunities for working watermen in agricultural industry in Gloucester?
I guess some of the taxes that they have to pay to work on the water, I think is a bit ridiculous. Hearing from watermen that their license, fees, the licensing fees are just absolutely outrageous for a lot of them to even work. So I wonder, first thing I'd make when I take them back, is see some of the fees and licenses, so we can get them back.
Thank you. Mr. Myers? Same question, I can repeat it if you like.
There's the, there's the overall improvements in regulatory environment applied to all the businesses. There's also a close working relationship between Marine Resources Council that has resulted in the expansion of usable oil shits in the rivers and waterways around Gloucester, such that they're able to take advantage of any raised numbers of oil shits going to payback. And probably have, within our planning, zoning department, working watermen's initiative to look at rezoning efforts that can help reduce the expenses and the difficulties of watermen when they come in the dock, uses of the piers, and the water, the shellfish process.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, do you have your vision? Same question?
I sadly haven't served and haven't done nothing, but I'm glad to hear the question. I would say that one of the, one of the things I would say is not change the RMA and protect that those, those harvests continue to grow.
Next question for the board of school board. What ideas do you have for improving the educational and development of Gloucester County students to compete fully in an evolving global society and workplace? Starting with Miss Parker.
I would like to see us do a better job of partnering with our businesses, our local businesses, because I think that there's a lot to garner from our business people that are out there. There's a lot of knowledge out there that they could bring to life for our students. And I think that's our future. I think when we go together with our students, our teachers, and our business people that are camp Gloucester County, there's a lot of good things that could come about from that. I know that there are some people that have volunteered in our schools already that are business partners, and I'd just like to see that improved and made more.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
I would say, again, increasing career and technical education, both at the middle school and high school levels, so we can have our, our kids ready to graduate and be put into jobs upon graduation. I think that's important. And also involving the community, because I know there's, there's a lot of businesses out here that are invested or have vested interest in our students, and they partner with us and offer mentorships and internships at their businesses. So they do really support the kids here in Gloucester, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. Would be continuing the call nine is? Sorry. What ideas do you have for improving the educational development of Gloucester County students to compete fully in an evolving and global society and workplace?
Absolutely. So I think that, like Miss Nelson had said about involving local, local businesses, I have visited several local businesses throughout my campaign, talking, and they want to be part of Gloucester High School and other CTE programs. So I think investing in career and technical education, preparing our students for the workforce, and also investing in technology, and also working with the community as well.
Thank you.
I also believe that within our schools, with the adding in vocational and technical classes, and that our businesses that we have here will allow mentorships where the children can go out and learn a job, a specific job, to be able to prepare them for getting out there and working in the work world, as well as being able to allow them to garner more technology insight that would allow them to compete on a global level.
Thank you. Our next question is for the board of supervisors. Considering the rapid growth of Gloucester, Gloucester's senior population, do you believe that Gloucester's supply of affordable and accessible housing is adequate? Beginning with? Yeah, Mr. Smith?
No, sir, I do not believe it's adequate. There's a whole lot more we need to do in Gloucester County, affordable housing, and development.
Thank you. Ms. Myers?
The front end of the answer is, I don't know. We are doing things for all of the housing, just to improve, start construction of the Davil Tunes, which is a holding out, senior, so way out there. There are a couple other projects that are intending to provide senior housing, particularly in the line of, things under construction, Mr. Myers, I'll wait.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
I would say that I wouldn't know if we're adequate, and that would be something that we should monitor in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Vazani?
So I'll tag with what Mr. Myers said, but I'll add one more thing. You know, I've been going door to door during that I'm retired, so I have the time to go door to door and meet a lot of folks. And I'd say about five out of six of the doors that I knock are people who are retired. They keep, keep telling me, Phil, please, whatever you do, don't raise our taxes. We are on fixed incomes. We can't afford anymore. And so as far as housing is concerned, we do have some projects that Mr. Myers had mentioned. But I'm concerned about the people who live in Gloucester County who are on fixed incomes. They can't afford continuous tax increases. And some of the things that I'm hearing on the other side of the table here, wants versus, you know, wanting everything they want, it, to me is scary. To me, that's, that's alarming. And I'm sure that retirees who are here tonight, and retirees, retirees will be reading about this tomorrow in the paper, will be scared to death with respect to what's going on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
I would say that I wouldn't know if we're adequate, and that would be something that we should monitor and review.
Thank you. Mr. Bussell?
I'll tag with what Mr. Meyer said, but I'll add one more thing. You know, I've been going door to door during that I'm retired, so I have the time to go door to door and meet a lot of folks. And I'd say about five out of six of the doors that I knock are people who are retired. They keep, keep telling me, Phil, please, whatever you do, don't raise our taxes. We are on fixed incomes. We can't afford anymore. And so as far as housing is concerned, we do have some projects that Mr. Meyer had mentioned, but I'm concerned about the people who live in Gloucester County who are on fixed incomes. They can't afford continuous tax increases. And some of the things that I'm hearing on the other side of the table here, wants versus, you know, wanting everything they want, it, to me is scary. To me, that's, that's alarming. And I'm sure that retirees who are here tonight, and retirees, retirees will be reading about this tomorrow in the paper, will be scared to death with respect to what's going on. Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next question is for the school board. With the continuing decline in the school population, this one is a little bit correct. With the continuing decline in the school population, at what point should another school consolidation be considered? Ms. Nelson?
I, that's a good question. We've already consolidated elementary schools upon the closure of TC Walker, which I was very involved with, of course against that, because that was my daughter's elementary school. And there's no space in the elementary schools right now to consolidate. They're busting at the seams anyway. Of course, we have two middle schools. Both of them are all actually, you know, two capacity. And then we have a high school with, you know, roughly seventeen hundred and fifty students, so I don't see consolidation even an option.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
The only time I would see that is if we see a really, really, really low teacher and student ratio.
Thank you. Ms. Matt?
At this time, one of the things that we do need to look at is that teacher-student ratio, but, you know, looking at, looking at our schools now, they are truly kind of busting at the seams. And so at this time, I really just don't see any, any resource to be able to consolidate these schools. As Ms. Parker said, we closed TC Walker, which I am so against, but I just don't see being able to consolidate these schools at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
There is no way we could do anything to get, to get rid of a school at this point, for sure. We are busting at the seams, as she said. The only thing that I will say that is going to be not well heard, I'm sure by a lot, that at some point, because of the amount of kids that are in school, we are going to have to redistrict. And I know nobody wants to. We, of all people, do not want to redistrict. But it's, we talked about it this year in our budget, and we went through all of that and decided that it wasn't the time, but I just want to put it out there that there's going to come a time that we're going to have to redistrict because Abington is full, Bodytown is full. We've just got too many kids, and we need to move them around the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question for the board of supervisors. Would you work towards an increase in taxes to better support Gloucester schools, maintenance, improve, improve a safe community via surf officers, fire, rescue, et cetera? Beginning with Mr. Meyer.
I will never work towards an increase in taxes. My basic philosophy is that you decide, we determine how much the county needs to spend in order to maintain the services that can match the tax rate to provide revenue needed to reach areas. In terms of maintenance in the schools, or teachers' pay, or whatever, I would like to point out that the, the patience of the people in the school community, their first priority the last couple of years is rejuvenating the local economy, which seems to be going pretty well. And we're looking at business tax revenue that's fifteen percent increase over the last year. So we see additional revenue sources coming. It's not to say we won't have to raise taxes a little bit, we may not have to, but we do have to meet the schools' needs and the expenditure side.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Now, we're on taxes. I too am retired and have walked the New York district, knocking on every door that I do find. And I've talked to many people, many single, fixed income elderly people. And I, I would beg to differ that you have not raised taxes dramatically on a lot of people in the New York district. You might have not raised the tax rate, but you raised the tax burden on a lot of people by two and three hundred percent, including myself. And there are people in this audience that I know had that same thing, two and three hundred percent increase in one year. So if we want to talk about raising taxes, you've never heard of this?
No.
Okay, that's because they will, the, the people on either side of you, the current board, has gone around saying they've lowered taxes, they've kept taxes lower, they've kept taxes lower, unless you live on the water. If you live on the water, they think you doubled and tripled your assessments. You've been knocking on different doors than I have, because what I've heard is that for people who live in a retirement community like we are, we are a retirement community. We have a lot, I mean, folks out there are retired. I bet you can show, show a hand. I can see, you can see the majority of the people in this room are retired. And to say that we've raised taxes, we haven't raised taxes except for one time last year, and we did that by mistake, because the school system told us they had an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus after we adopted our budget. So we shouldn't have had to raise taxes last year. So again, I took Sandy Warner about two years ago when he came on board in between Ms. Barton and Brett Pedors, and I showed him around this county. And I said, Brett, Mr. Warner, can you in good conscience look at these people and say you want to raise their taxes? We don't have deep pockets here in Gloucester County. So you have to work with the income levels that we have here. We're not James City County. We're not New York County. We're not Newbury News, Norwood, Hampton. We are Gloucester County, and we are not as rich as they are. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Palmer. I'm not an advocate for raising taxes just to be raising taxes, but sometimes you have to raise taxes to improve the quality of life, to enhance services for all community members. You have to improve infrastructure for your schools and your county buildings, and you have to have competitive school and county employee compensation. You have to fully funding your fire, rescue services, and you have to support your sheriff department, who protects you. Who protects, I, I don't want anybody to get up to my money and read the newspaper and be scared that, you know, we're going to raise your taxes, or Mr. Smith said he wants to raise our taxes. No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying sometimes you have to do this to improve the quality of life, to enhance services to all community members. Did I not want to raise taxes, Mr. Bazani, but maybe we should have kept that low tax factor out?
Thank you. The next question is for the school board candidates. Nationwide, school enrollments are changing in both urban settings and counties like Gloucester. There are declines in some government school enrollments and growing enrollments in charter and home school. Do you favor parental choice in a manner, a place where your family chooses to educate their children? And if you do not favor parental choice, please explain why. Beginning with Mr. Kelly.
I think, I think ultimately that the parent is going to decide where his or her child is going to go. You shouldn't force anyone to go anywhere they don't want to go. So I think that simplifies it.
Ms. Matt?
Just as Mr. Kelly said, you know, we can't, we can't make that determination for that parent of where they want to send their child. That parent is going to send their child where they think that they're going to receive the best education. That is not something that I think that anybody should be telling them what to do. That is strictly left up to the parent's choice.
Thank you. Father?
I'm a big proponent for public schools and public education. I grew up in public schools, my children grew up in public schools. But as a parent, you are an advocate for your child, and it's your duty as that advocate to make the choice that's best for you, whatever that may be.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
I certainly agree that it should be a parent's choice on how they want to educate their child, whether that be home school, charter school, Christian school, public school. I believe the problem with public school is there's way too much government involvement, rules, regulations, and unfunded mandates.
Thank you. The next question is for the board of supervisors. Please state your position on changing the RMA in Gloucester and explain why you hold your views. Beginning with Mr. Palmer.
My views on changing the RMA, five years ago were a bit different than they are today. Since I've lived in Gloucester, my house is completely within the RMA, and my views have changed. My position would probably be in a better place if I was slightly outside of the RMA. So I do not believe we should change the restrictions on the RMA. I've just completed, we've just completed building the garage, and we've got it built, permits and all of the restrictions it's possible to do within the RMA. I think it helps prevent, protect the very important ecosystem that the watermen and the rest of us all enjoy in this community. And I don't think we need to make any changes at that at this time.
Bazani?
If everyone would take the time to read the Chesapeake Bay Act. Chesapeake Bay Act does not require a full RMA for Intona County. It is an optional thing. And so what we were trying to do until Delegate Hodges has taken the ball from us, rightly so, what we've tried to do is relax this part of the ordinance to allow homeowners to do more with what they want on their property, and allow businesses to not face seventy-five to eighty thousand dollar site plans on properties that have nothing to do with the water effluent going into the Chesapeake Bay, completely high and dry. So what we were trying to do before Mr. Hodges decided to work with the General Assembly, and they are in fact working to change the requirements of the RMA right now as we speak, doing the same thing we tried to do locally here as a board. So that is coming. But that's what my view on the RMA is, we need to relax ordinance to state levels, not to infringe or go over and beyond what's required by state law.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I can, I'm, we should not change any restrictions on our RMA.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Okay, just to be clear, the changes to the RMA that are being proposed essentially reduce the stormwater runoff regulations on land disturbances between twenty-five hundred square feet and one acre, which means for new construction, you're talking only small businesses, residential properties. The residential properties are already excluded. Okay, so, or if you're a church and you want to expand your church by two thousand square feet or something, right now you have to comply with this. Cost of compliance is sixty to seventy thousand dollars. We went through this for almost a year, and the state right now that I agree with is Hospital Seventeen Seventy Four is doing more research about the economic impact and the environmental impact, and we'll get those results in the spring, and revisit it in the spring.
Thank you. The next question is for the school board. What needs do you see, i.e. gifted education or technical education, that Gloucester County Public Schools should be meeting differently? The first question goes to, to Matt.
As I look at the funding for, for the gifted program, I look at our students, our young students, and I see many of them that are gifted. I think we need to make sure that there's funding for them. We want to make sure that their, their technology base enhance their gift. We don't want to take anything from them. We have a lot of children out there that are gifted, and they're not being given that chance to show their gift. Technology needs to make sure that it keeps up with them. Many of our children that are gifted kind of run away from technology simply because the technology is not keeping up with their gift.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
We have looked at the gifted programs that we've had in the last few years, and we were very lacking in what we needed to provide these children. So we have stepped it up. We're hopeful that we can do more for the kids as time goes on, but we're under budget constraints with that as well. I sit on the Middle Peninsula Regional Special Ed Board, so I come from a different vantage point of this special needs children, and those things are mandated by the state that are requirements that are hit us every year. We're looking at down the road some more this year that are going to hit us. So we've got to weigh both areas and do what we can for both the special, special ed children as well as the gifted children.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Ms. Nelson? I think our goal is to meet needs for all of those, special needs, gifted, and also career technical education. With this gifted, we are moving in a, in the right direction as far as that's concerned. We do have many gifted students in the system, and we certainly want to be able to provide them, you know, great opportunities for them. And as I was out talking to people, that certainly was a concern of parents with, with gifted students, as well as parents with children with special needs. Their, their IDPs and, and things were not being met, so that's a concern, and that's of course not acceptable. And again, of course, I'm a big supporter of the CTE program, and, and we need to move in the right direction as far as that's concerned, both middle school and high school.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I was lucky enough to work with several of the special education students through, when I was in Gloucester High School. And one of the reasons that made me run for the school board is that many of the students baked cookies throughout the day to raise funds for their classroom to get needs. They were told that they were not allowed to make cookies or sell cookies anymore, so that the students would have to buy them from the cafeteria. That was upsetting to me, so they couldn't buy printers or such for their classrooms that they were looking to buy for the special education students. So I'm a strong advocate for increasing special education courses and programs and services for all students, and I'm a strong, strong advocate for career technical education for both our middle school, both our middle schools and our high school.
Thank you. Next question is for the board of supervisors. When will the old Page Site be sold? Will the funds be used to reduce taxes as was promised when the old New Page's funding was approved? Beginning with Mr. Bazani.
So, so we've been working with the schools on a one-on-one basis with Dr. Clements and the chairs, vice chairs. We first, we first proposed exchanging the land on Page Middle School for, in exchange for a construction or transportation facility for the school system and possibly for the county. We have earmarked that property, and I can't get into exactly what we will do. That's what, that's the, that's the purpose of that question. I appreciate you trying to get an answer out of that. But, but we are using that property for economic development. We are using that property to bring jobs into Gloucester County. And remember I was telling you about light industry jobs? That's the kind of jobs we're looking for. And I can't really go any further with what we're trying to do with, but we're trying to work with the schools, and sometimes there are some hiccups we've got to work through. But I think we'll get there, but we have to have the school board to cooperate with us in order to get there.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Bazani is saying he wants to use it for economic development, and the school system is saying they want to use it for a transportation facility. I don't know, this conversation's been going on. I haven't been on the board for the school board for the past two years, but this conversation started, it's been forty years back, and I can see the conversation is still the same thing. Nothing's changed.
Well, we don't want to build, we don't want to build a swimming pool there.
I'm sorry, I'm on the outside of sports complex that included this one.
He's made, he's made, continued. Mr. Mike?
So I understand that they get an extra seven and a half cents. What hopefully will happen is we'll have a contract ready for both the school board and the board supervisors to sign here November to transfer, begin the process of transferring the title. There's a school transportation facility on the grounds right now, and the school is not going to give up their claim to that transportation facility. A tool, a new one, has been constructed at, at the new Page Will Site. So they always have a place to maintain their vehicles and facilities. Once the, the transfers, at least thirty, four acres will then be available for business That question will, Mr. Ms. Astor's coming up.
Ms. Parker?
We have pre-K programs that are in our school right now. As anybody that has read the newspapers can find that the more we can do to educate our children as young as we can, and they're read to and taught, the better off we are as parents, as teachers, and to get our kids to that final K-12 graduation point. So I'm a full proponent for trying to do what we can to get pre-Ks in all of our elementary schools. Back in many years ago, my son was supposed to be in a pre-K program. It ended up that particular year is the year they decided to do away with that, and he went into kindergarten. In my opinion, that was a mistake for him because he wasn't ready. So the pre-K program would have been much better for him, so I do agree with you.
Ms. Nelson?
I do support bringing pre-K to all of our schools. Like Ms. Parker said, we already have them, programs in some of our elementary schools. But you certainly can talk to any kindergarten teacher, and they can say that, you know, if a child has not previously attended pre-K or, you know, any type of preschool, you can definitely tell the difference. You know, sometimes in those children, you know, they have a hard time standing in line and being quiet and sitting down and, you know, being attentive. So I think starting their education early with pre-K is certainly important. But again, it comes down to funding.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
I agree, I agree one hundred percent that I'm strong with, I'm staying, I'm sorry, I'm staying with Ms. Nelson, Ms. Parker's idea by continuing and growing our pre-K programs throughout Gloucester County Public Schools, and just as long as our funding allows it.
I also agree with all of my components up here, that pre-K is really necessary. I think it is the start for allowing children to be able to learn how to act at school. It also allows them a kind of a head start in learning basic math, how to count, knowing their ABCs. So it gives them a good base once they get into kindergarten.
Thank you. Candidates, we've exhausted our time for the audience questions, so now we will begin with your closing statements. And as was stated earlier, Mr. Myers will begin the closing statement, and Mr. Kelly will begin the closing statements. Two minutes, yes.
I was hoping to have the closing closing statement. Everything I had in my notes for the closing statement has already been kind of touched on, so I'm going to make up a couple of points that I had to make. Under Virginia law, the school board is independent of the board supervisors. Back in some, I don't want the board supervisors meddling in what classes you have, or what you say a pre-K or not. But they do make the board supervisors responsible for a large portion of your school funding, about forty percent. And the reason why that is to provide, the same way the Constitution divides judicial, executive, legislative branch checks, to provide a spending check on schools that will always want to get more money to make the schools better than they are. So the school board are fierce advocates for better schools. And the board supervisors has the ugly job of either saying no or not commit so much. And that is our responsibility under state law. When you start electing a board of supervisors that consists of school advocates or recycled school board members, I'm sorry about that, then what you're doing is effectively eliminating that check on school spend. So do it at the risk of losing the check on school spend for supervisors behind. I just wanted to say one thing about economic development. When we were elected in 2013, the economy here between 2010 and 2013, the average wage grew by one-half a percent. That's total. And county spending increased by fourteen percent. We start implementing common sense conservative principles here. At this point in time, over the last three years, county income and wage income has grown by ten percent, and taxes and the spending has been halved. That's what you're doing at this point.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, in closing, I would like to make remarks to what Mr. Myers says. Just because I'm running board supervisors, I do have an interest in the public school system. I don't look to get rid of the separation. I mean, we all should have concern about the school district. I am concerned with the current board. I mean, I don't mind holding spending down. Fiscal discipline is an important thing, not to go into debt, but to tell everyone in the county that they kept taxes low, and there's been a special assessment on anyone who lives on the water. And anyone who lives on the water will tell you that. I see thumbs coming up in the room, that some of these people in this county, and I've knocked on door after door, fifty-one percent of your county lives on the water. So fifty-one percent of the district that you represent, Mr. Bazani, had their taxes raised draconianly. I mean, large increases from two-hundred to three-hundred percent. And it's a factor, tax burden's gone up. I also want to say that if I'm elected, if I'm elected to this position, you will never worry about me doing the right thing. I will always do the right thing, no matter what ideology. We all have ideology one way or the other. I've seen ideology get in the way of good decisions too many times. I've seen too many of my brothers and sisters come back to this country in flag draped coffins because politicians are stuck on a single bit of ideology. I promise you that will never happen if I'm elected.
Thank you.
So when you become a member of the board of supervisors, you have to understand that there are different, there are scarce resources. And you can't bias your decisions on one faction of the county where we provide forty percent of our total budget to one faction, and not worry about the allocation of resources to the other areas of the county, like our capital improvements, our fire and rescue. Now, a week ago, or two weeks ago, I did a state of the county review. And one of the most telling charts that I included in the state of the county review was a chart showing a decline of eight hundred students in Gloucester County over the last seven years. And yet, at the same time over the last seven years, this board of supervisors has increased funding to the schools, to the fact that this year alone, this year alone, we gave the schools two-point-eight million dollars more this year than last year. Two-point-eight million dollars more this year despite the fact that our students have been declining. So again, when you are a board supervisor, I know of the schools, you have your concerns of the schools, and that's great because that's what you, you need to, you need to worry about our children, you need to worry about our education. But as a board supervisor, we have a different type of job to do. We have to be concerned about your funding, but we also have to be concerned about all the other hands that are out there that need funding. This year alone, we gave fire and rescue three-hundred thousand dollars in monies. We gave our sheriff's department increased funding as well. And we did that, we did that without raising taxes. And Mr. Farmer, I can't help if you decide that you want to live on water on property. Those, that's a decision that you made. My property taxes went up as well. So to say that it's a draconian thing, to say it's a draconian thing to not, to raise taxes, we haven't raised taxes. We haven't raised taxes except for last year.
You raised tax burden.
I don't understand that, sir. I don't understand what you mean by that.
That's like arguing over what the definition is.
One at a time, sir, I've got the floor now, right? I've got the floor now. So I have to stop, so I've been told to stop.
Ms. Smith?
First of all, I'd like to thank close sponsors in WACP, Gloucester Education Association, Gloucester Retired Education Association. Real quick, Mr. Bazani, I got to touch this real quick. He said he gave a school two-point-eight million dollars. Well, let's get it clear, two million, four hundred thousand dollars of that capital went to, not operational spend, which had nothing to do with compensation. Got to get that out there. If you'd like to, I want you to know that I am a strong advocate for public schools. Yes, I am. But I'm also an advocate for county employees as well. I haven't touched them tonight. Okay, now look at this, the county employees got a two percent raise in the summer of 2016, but the health insurance went up twenty percent August of 2016. County employees got a two percent raise July of '16, but the health insurance went up twenty-four percent August of '17. County employees are supposed to get a one percent bonus this year. One person stopped at my house, concerned, concerned, wanting me to do this because his health insurance had went up one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars a month for his family plan. Another person told me they had to get their supplies off of their health insurance because the prices had gone too high. Obviously, I strongly believe that the school system and also the county need to come together and work on getting a cheaper health plan for people in our school system. If I'm elected, I promise you, last slogan is, it's not about politics, and it's not about political party, it's about people. And that's inclusive, that's all people, Democrats, Republicans, black, white, maybe Hispanic, whatever. That's everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from our school board candidates, beginning with Mr. Kelly.
Well, before I speak any further about myself, again, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out here tonight and showing your support for all of us, being informed about your candidates that will be on the ballot in this upcoming November. And also, I want to thank the three community organizations that are hosting this event, all the candidates in public this afternoon. Thanks to the Average Routine Club for allowing us to use this facility, and thanks again to Gloucester County Sheriff's Office in the back. Again, I want each and every one of you to make a great, I mean, a good choice when you go to ballots, I mean, to vote this November. Vote for somebody that truly understands what we are facing in our public schools, what it's like to be a student in this Gloucester County Public Schools, and understands what teachers and students and faculty and support staff are facing in this, in our public schools. I promise you something, I will work my hardest that I could possibly work to ensure that all of our children are receiving a high-quality education in this county, protecting your taxpayers' dollars, and getting the job done. And thank you each and every one of you for coming out here, and I'm glad that I have not ran a dirty campaign. My thing is, don't run a dirty campaign, focus on the real issues.
Good evening. Yes, I'd like to thank all of those that were involved in planning this. It was a daunting task. I want to thank our department, our sheriff's department, for being out here to help and keep us protected. But the one thing that I do want to say is that working on a school board is not easy. It is a challenge, and it is a challenge that I truly face. I've been on a school board, I understand how it works, understand that we have problems in our school system. Every school system has problems. The problem is, is that you need people out there that are willing to challenge those problems. Make sure that our school board and our board, our supervisors, is transparent, so that we, the taxpayers, make sure that our money is being spent where it is supposed to go. So I want to make sure that our children have an excellent education, that they are challenged, and that they are ready to get out there, whether it be locally, nationally, or globally. So if you get out there and you get ready to vote, please think that I will be there to be a voice for not only our children, but for our teachers as well. So thank you, and folks have a good evening, be safe going home.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's most appreciative for those of us that are sitting here. You get to a point, at some points, that when we sit in rooms and there's a handful of people, you feel like there's empathy everywhere. So it's really good to see that there's people out here that do care about our county and our schools, and I appreciate very much that each one of you were here. I also appreciate the fact that we were able to have this, and that Ms. Ray organized all of this. I appreciate all the time she spent in organizing and everyone that participated. I guess in closing for me, I have been a member of the school board now, this is my twelfth year, way too long, some of you may think, but I appreciate each and every of the, each and every one of you that has helped me along the way in my district. I appreciate the phone calls that I get when you've got concerns. I try to address them in a timely manner. I hope that you will continue to support me in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank you for joining us this evening and spending your time. Also thank the three organizations that made this possible, Reverend Graham for being our moderator this evening and our timekeepers, and also Ms. Bobby Ray, special thanks to you for all the time and your commitment into making this happen. I also, I'd just like to say I look forward, I know that I'm new, so I do look forward to serving the York District with the Gloucester County School Board. I do encourage you to reach out to me, whether you're in my district or not. If you've got a concern, or an issue, or an idea, or anything, I encourage you to contact me because whether you're in my district or not, I want to hear from you. And also, I'm eager to continue the momentum that this board has established. I want to continue to foster the relationship between the board of supervisors and school board. I think that's extremely important here in the county, so that people can come together and get things done. And I truly do think that we need to move in the right direction. And also, I encourage you to attend our school board meetings, because this would be fantastic if we had this many people at our school board meetings. They're monthly. Our next monthly board meeting is next Tuesday, 7:00 PM at TC Walker Elementary. So I just thank you, thank you for this time, and hope to see you at polls on November seventh.
Thank you. I expect you to join me in thanking our candidates today for their participation on this program. Thank you again. Thank you, candidates, for your participation, and to the audience for your engaging and thought-provoking questions. I understand that former delegate Bobby Morgan is with us, and I'd like to acknowledge him.
Yes. Thank you, sir, for your years of dedication. We also thank our hosts, the Royal Lab, for the generous use of their facilities. We also thank everyone else who contributed in any way, especially to our high school students who came out to be a part of this process, and the teachers. And I want to give a special thanks to Reverend Bobby Ray, for her tireless, and her leadership in pulling this forum together. She's one of a kind. And what Bobby says, we do. Thank you, Bobby, for your leadership efforts. I also like to recognize the committees. I know there's some folks standing around the walls and the corners. If you would stand to be recognized, those who participated on the committees for the end planning and organizing process, I see several. Thank you again for your tireless efforts. John C. Maxwell once said that leaders must be close enough to relate to others, but far enough to motivate them. We thank you as leaders, and most of all, we encourage our voters to go to the polls on November the seventh, and hope for the person that motivates you. Again, thank you. God bless each of you. God bless the United States of America.